Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wenatchee City Council meeting for Thursday, January 28, 2016. For the record, it's 5:15 PM. First item tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag, and Councilmember Mark Hart said he'd lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lyle.
You're welcome.
And for the record, Tammy, we have six council members here. Councilmember Huffaker is en route, but is not going to get here in time, I don't believe. First item would be our consent items, which includes this evening's agenda, vouchers, minutes, and Resolution 2016-08 regarding voting representatives.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the consent items tonight consisting of this evening's agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings, and Resolution Number 2016-08 designating voting representatives on behalf of the city to various community boards, councils, and organizations.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Kulas, and a second by Councilmember Bailey to adopt the evening's consent items, as shown in tonight's agenda. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on this evening's agenda would be citizen comment. This would be a time when any member of the audience would like to address the council. We'd give you three minutes and ask that you state your name and address for the record. So, any takers this evening? Come on up, sir.
My name's Ray Provo, Jr., and I was here last June making a proposal about the street that I live on, which is Princeton Street, and I know there's two new council members. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So, you're unfamiliar with this proposal, and I just want to go over what has happened since then. I made the proposal as concerns the area of Princeton Street between Fourth and Fifth, and it's basically a one-lane street, and since the beginning of time, it's been used for two-way traffic and a bicycle route. My proposal was to make that a one-way street going north, principally because Fourth Street and Princeton is a blind intersection and is dangerous, and the intersection of Fifth and Princeton is -- has had numerous accidents, and there's always a big traffic problem there if there's traffic on that portion of Princeton Street trying to get across or go onto Fifth, and there's another car trying to get onto Princeton Street. So, that creates a problem. If it was one-way going north, both of those situations would be much better and much safer. Now, after the council meeting last June, it was turned over to the Public Works Department, and the city engineer called, and we talked about it, and what it came down to, he indicated that he needed to know if the public was interested in this proposal, and said that I would need to do a petition. Are the council members aware of the petition that I did over this last summer? Any of you aware of the petition that I did?
Let me make copies and give it to you guys, or not?
No.
I think we got it. I think we received it. I don't remember if we made copies and gave it to you or not, but I've seen it, and Gary has seen it.
Right. So, I did the petition, and it took about three weeks, and I went to the -- I got -- I ended up talking to 146 people, and 145 people signed it and said, yes, it's a good idea. Now, when you think about that, that's like 99.5 percent of the people agree on this, which is almost, you know, unheard of. Anyway, I got the accident reports for both of those intersections, and I talked to the police department and the fire department to see if there was going to be a problem with emergency responders if that street were to change in that fashion. The police department said, no problem. The fire marshal said absolutely no problem, and said that he was in love with the idea. Now, as far as that happening, I -- everybody I've talked to, and I've talked to other people since then that are not on the petition, and to a person, they all said, yes, they think it's a good idea.
Three minutes.
So, I don't -- are all of you familiar with the street that I'm talking about?
There's a house in the corner there. There's a house almost on the street.
It says right there on the edge.
Yellow or green or something like that.
And then that property runs all the way back to Fourth Street. That's all one piece of property. And when I initially talked to the mayor about it, he told me that, you know, the right way to fix the street would be to buy the property and widen the street, but there's a lot of money involved in that, and it's just not in the budget, and I understand that you can't spend that kind of money on one block, you know? And so, I put this proposal forward, and I feel this is a good idea, and a lot of people that have looked at it feel this is a good idea. And obviously, as far as the public interest in this, I think I've established that with the petition, and the mayor has a copy of the petition and the accident reports.
And I'll make sure you guys get copies of it if, for some reason, I didn't get it to you.
So, I still want to see this go forward.
So, Gary, do you want to come up? Because you and I have talked about this a couple of different times, so I know we're -- Gary being our city engineer and the one who has to ultimately sign off and take responsibility for it, so.
Do we get another three minutes now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, we -- this hasn't fallen off of our radar screen yet. It's still on our list of many complaint areas. Generally, I looked at it. I didn't see the collision problem that's been indicated by Mr. Provo. I sent a memo to the Public Works Director at the time, Dan, suggesting that we make some improvements at the four-way intersection at Fourth and Princeton, because the southbound movement really is not visible from eastbound Fourth Street, and it does present a problem, so it's going to add an additional stop sign. We don't have enough right-of-way there to get a stop sign in, so we've got to actually go in and get an easement and talk to the property owner there in order to get to that point. I did speak with Mr. Provo and say he's not likely going to get my recommendation for a one-way street, even with the petition, because we've got circulation problems north and south in that part of town, as really, we've got a network of, you know, broken network of north-south streets everywhere between Western and Miller Street. So, that's been a recognized problem, and, you know, there's other places on Princeton Street that are just as bad as this, in fact, even worse, because they don't even have sidewalk on them. Twenty feet is adequate for two lanes of traffic. It's not desirable, but it's adequate. It meets minimum fire code, and that's where I was going to leave it. But we lost our director, and we're looking for a new one, and our temporary engineering services manager was going to pick that up and get back to you. I apologize. You called me yesterday, and I did not get back to you, Mr. Provo, today. So, that's -- if I would have called him today, you might not have him in here right now.
Could I -- I want to talk about a couple of things that you mentioned there. One of them, you said a circulation problem. I don't know what that means exactly.
That means we don't have near the north-south streets to carry traffic north and south as we do east and west in that part of town.
All right. On that subject, if you're traveling east or west on Fifth Street, there are four other streets to turn south off of. There's Sunset, Mills, Ramona, and Pear Lane. Now, they all go to Third, and Pear Lane goes all the way to Orchard. So, say if you were traveling west on Fifth Street, and you realize that you could not make a left turn on Princeton because it's a one-way street, you have the option of four other streets, and they're all normal-width two-lane streets. Princeton, obviously, is not a normal-width two-lane street. So, my thinking on this is, why would you want to have two-way traffic on a single-lane street as opposed to having two-way traffic on a two-lane street? And as far as the inconvenience for traffic goes, the traffic going east or west on Fifth Street has the option to turn off on any of those streets, and there's no time lost, none at all. There's no inconvenience and time loss for them. The inconvenience on my proposal comes to, first of all, the people that live on Princeton Street would be, if they're approaching from the north and they're coming to their place, that means they would have to go around the block to get to their house. All these people signed the petition, knowing full well that would be an inconvenience for them, but they were willing to make that concession because they know how bad the street is and how difficult it is. Now, the other situation is the traffic coming on Princeton going south, and they approach Fifth Street. If they look across and they see a "do not enter" sign, and Princeton being a one-way street, they can't go there anymore. So, they have the option of either turning left and going to Ramona, or right and going to Pear Lane and going across. So, for them, that's going to be an inconvenience in travel time of 30 or 40 seconds to get to wherever it is they're going.
We're going to have to take -- we've got other stuff we've got to get to tonight. We're going to have to keep the conversation going between you and Gary and myself and our new Public Works Director, and we may end up agreeing not to agree. I know he wants to put a stop sign there.
Well, I agreed to get that done first, but we've got a right-of-way problem, and, you know, we've got a few other projects.
I do have a question for Gary. Gary, you mentioned that there is no collision problem. What is -- what would you consider a collision problem?
Recurring collisions of...
Do we have a number, or...?
I don't have the number.
The mayor has the accident reports that I printed.
I understand, but I'm trying to figure out what is the standard to say, okay, we've got a collision problem here.
One...
From the city's perspective, sir.
Yeah, it's repeated identifiable sorts of collisions that, you know, are -- that are basically can be rectified with an engineering solution. And we look for those. The police department looks for those and alerts me to them if they see them. I review accident reports, and if I keep seeing recurring problems, then I'll look further into it and see, you know, what kind of collision history do we got here? That's real common to do for any design project. If you make a change, you have problems, you might want to look for engineering fixes for collision problems. I looked at the collisions here. If you want to go back, you know, 15 years, you could say, yeah, there's been quite a few collisions, but typically, from the engineering standard, you go back about three years, you look, are you having a lot of accidents? Yes or no? If the answer is yes, then you should look at an insurance engineering solution. If the answer is no, then you probably don't really -- you've probably got bigger problems in other areas you should be focusing on.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
It's all right. The thing about the collisions at Fourth and Princeton, I know there's been more collisions there, because I lived there, that are on the accident report, and I think a lot of people, this happens, as we know, they have an accident, a fender bender, and for whatever reason, they may not want to report it to their insurance company, or some other reason they don't want the police there, so there's no accident report. Now, in April, I believe it was, there was a serious accident there, and the problem was the woman was coming off of Fourth, and it's a blind intersection, and she was pulling onto Princeton. Well, you can't see the traffic coming south on Princeton until you're in the middle of the intersection. It's just that bad. So, she got T-boned there. Her car got messed up pretty bad, and she got injured, and the police were there and everything, and I'm pretty sure she got wrote up for running the stop sign. And, you know, that can happen to any -- she didn't actually run the stop sign. She was just trying to turn the corner, right? But I know there's been other accidents there that are not on the police report, because I've lived there for 26 years. And so, you know, as far as Princeton being a one-way street there, that would eliminate that problem totally. There would be no more traffic coming from that direction, and then people coming down Fourth could actually pull out without fear of getting nailed there. Now, you know...
We've got to move on. So, we can't -- we're not going to spend an hour on this particular topic.
I'll be sure to get a report back to the mayor and the council.
And then, at some point, I think, just to make it clear to the council and to Mr. Provo, I think Mr. Owen is going to make a recommendation that we don't make that change. If you guys want to trump him, as a legislative body, you have the right to do so.
Yes.
In a public meeting, if you guys want to vote to trump Mr. Owen so that he's legally covered, we can do that, okay?
And there's a couple of things. We do want to make a change at the four-way stop. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
I did agree that that was something that probably should be fixed. It was the one-way street issue with...
Well, we could just see the police reports and stuff.
No, we'll get you all the information that we got, but at the end of the day, this may come back to you and have the council make a vote.
I have one request of the city council members. If you could just, in your free time, take a drive up there and look at it, take a few minutes to look at it and see what it is I'm talking about, and then you'll have firsthand experience, and you can form your own thoughts and opinions on it.
Perfect. Yes, ma'am, you have a...
Well, I want to address what Butch said. I live on Fourth Street, and I've lived there for 33 years, and there are a lot more collisions down there than ever get written up, because whenever there's a crash, the whole neighborhood comes down to see what's going on. And many times, they just do whatever they'll...
Yeah, they don't get it reported to the police department, so we don't see it, yeah.
So, I really, I'm not sure that the police reports are indicative of what really happened.
Okay. So, we'll take this through the next process, and then if we end up getting in front of the council, they would end up with the final say.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Thanks, Gary. Any of the members of the citizens wish to address the council this evening? See no other takers. We have some presentations tonight. The first one we'll do is we'll do the America's Best Communities proclamation. You know, Alan Walker's here, so are you going to -- do you have something we're reading to the record?
Don't you have something for Maria?
I haven't.
We have a proclamation. We're going to read it to the record, and then we're going to hear from Steve Sandman and Alan Walker, so. Councilmember Kulas.
Whereas more than 350 cities nationwide entered the America's Best Communities competition in 2014, and the cities of Wenatchee and East Wenatchee were selected as one of 50 quarterfinalists in April 2015. Whereas our Valley What's Next, Nuestro Valle Que Sigue, was formed by community leaders -- this is great without my glasses -- community leaders to develop a regional vision and action plan with intentional strategies that will shape our future, tap into the strengths of our community, and bring a collective impact to our valley in becoming more vibrant and more prosperous. Whereas, from the class of 50 quarterfinalists, the 15 with the most innovative ideas being executed were selected as semifinalists, and the cities of Wenatchee and East Wenatchee were selected. The America's Best Communities competition has dedicated $10 million in prizes and other support to spark economic revitalization in small towns and rural communities across the country. The 15 semifinalists were chosen based on their innovative solutions designed to transform their local economies and improve the lives and livelihoods of their citizens. Whereas a sense of community, small-town feel, and cultural diversity are highly valued in our valley, we are proud of our beautiful landscape and recreational playground, and the top two mainstays, public power and agriculture. We have a culture on innovation and celebrate the entrepreneur and our youth, our future. Whereas our communities embrace change, and there is readiness to make desired change happen now. Community support is key to turning ideas into real projects, plans, and goals. Our sense of community, friendliness of its people, values, cultural diversity, recreational opportunities, natural resources, scenic beauty, and climate are our strengths. All of these together provide an excellent basis for the creation of a long-range vision and strategic action plan revitalizing our valley. Now, therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim April 2016 as America's Best Communities Month in the City of Wenatchee, and are excited to see what the future holds for our Valley What's Next, Nuestro Valle Que Sigue, as we become more vibrant and more prosperous. And witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 28th day of January 2016. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kulas, and I'll get this to Alan and Steve, but why don't you go ahead and give us your little presentation this evening?
Sure, thank you. Steve Sandman is here with me, General Manager for Frontier Communications and our number-one cheerleader on this project, if you will. Just a little bit of a brief update. I did bring the sign that we received from Steve at an unveiling ceremony a couple of weeks ago, where we were announced as one of the 15 semifinalists now.
Woo!
Thank you, Allison. And what happens now is between now and the end of April, besides a whole bunch of other work around this, but April 26 through the 28th, we'll be back in Durham, North Carolina, and we have an opportunity to give a in-person presentation to the ABC judges, at which time they will select eight of the 15 semifinalists for the next round of cash awards, which is $100,000. So, on the 28th of April, we'll be returning to Wenatchee with $100,000 more in our coffers for the region. And from there, we continue our vision and planning process, as well as implementing several action items. And April of 2017, Frontier Communications will announce the top three winners, respectively receiving $3 million, $2 million, and $1 million. So, at that point in time, we'll receive the $3 million, top place finish. And this is all recorded, I understand, so I have no problem making a statement.
A lot of pressure on Steve to deliver the goods.
I am, I am. I'm assuming he has the right pockets to line, so to speak. So, no, we're just very excited to be a part of this process. It's been a coming together, if you will, of multiple jurisdictions on both sides of the river. We'll be in front of the East Wenatchee City Council in a couple of weeks requesting the same proclamation. They've been a great partner in this effort as well. And Steve, do you have anything to...
So, it's important work that they do, and this organization through our Valley What's Next has got an incredible amount of support, not the least of which is two people in this room sit on this committee, Allison and Steve, who helped mold this plan that got them to be one of 15 semifinalists. And basically, what Frontier did, this was in the works, but this contest sponsored by Frontier and Dish, Cobank, and the Weather Channel, basically just served as a catalyst to really move this forward with not only what happens to our community as a benefactor, but money that goes back to the community to be able to see this come to life. And I've appreciated the support. The mayor has been terrifically supportive as well, and I appreciate the support for this organization by the council as well.
Any questions?
So, what's your ask? Give us your ask.
Oh, our ask, yes.
Sign the document, Mayor.
Sign the document. We also have a financial request from the City of East Wenatchee, or, well, them too.
That's not how you're going to get the money, Alan.
Go out and get it, yeah. From the City of Wenatchee. We recognize the importance of continuing this effort, and there is $100,000 that we have every belief we will be receiving in April, but just in case that does not happen, we are in the process of securing $100,000 from multiple jurisdictions prior to our trip back to North Carolina at the end of April. So, we currently are in the process of raising that $100,000. We have $10,000 from the Community Foundation of North Central Washington. We have $10,000 from the Douglas County Port District. We have $5,000 from Wenatchee Valley College, and we'll be making an ask to other jurisdictions as well. The idea is to receive $50,000 from governmental entities and $50,000 from private business sectors, from government and NGO, non-government entities, such as a community foundation. So, our ask here this evening is for a contribution of $5,000 from the City of Wenatchee towards this effort to continue moving forward. We blew through the initial $50,000 to the tune of $56,000, so we did a good job there. We spent the money well, but the work does not stop between now and the end of April. We have several projects that we are working on and to keep this moving forward, and so we're trying to raise the money, one, to help fill the gap between January 1st and May 1st, and then also moving forward through the remainder of 2016 and hopefully into 2017.
So, the Finance Committee did have a presentation from Alan today and looked at the books, and we thought we could pledge $5,000 of one-time money, so I just wanted the rest of the council to be aware that we had done it, and asked Alan if he was here tonight to make the ask to the entire group. I don't think we need a motion or anything, but just wanted you to know that we had -- at least the Finance Committee had agreed to do that, so without any objections from the council.
Very nice. Thank you.
I will sign whatever it is you want me to sign.
Okay.
Perfect. Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members.
And I have one other presentation in my hot little hand for Maria Holman. Where's Maria? Come on up here.
She's hiding.
I was going to take it.
So, Maria took her professional human resources exam a week and a half ago, didn't even tell us, and she passed it, so pretty young, Maria.
Woo-hoo! Yeah!
Congratulations. It was nice to see everyone striving to do their best and get their professional designations.
Oh, one other thing, we have the sign over here. We'll leave that with City Hall for the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
And display it wherever you folks deem appropriate.
Perfect. Thank you, Alan.
Can we get a picture?
Oh!
With the resolution and...
With the proclamation.
Proclamation.
I'm in the proclamation.
Or just Steve, yes.
No, no.
No?
Yep.
I like you better.
All right.
Action items. Let's put some people on some boards. Historic Preservation, Linda Bries.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last December, we were pleased to have Wendy Priest and Lisa Dogren reappointed to the Historic Board, and we made a minor error in the resolution. The terms for serving on the board are three-year terms, not two-year terms, so apologize about that error, and are just asking that you'd consider making an amendment so that we could have the pleasure of having them on the board for three years and not two.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2016-06, revising prior Resolution Number 2015-77 relating to the appointment of voting representatives to the Wenatchee Historic Preservation Board for three-year terms, Lisa Dogren and Wendy Priest.
Second.
motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt Resolution 2016-06, extending the terms for Lisa Dogren and Wendy Priest. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn. Allison, lodging tax and diversity.
Your Honor, I will recuse myself on this item.
Thank you. Tammy's got that for the record.
Good evening, Allison Williams, Executive Services Director. The first item for your consideration is Resolution 2016-07. This would replace four people on our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and we considered their applications at their last meeting, and so you have before you a resolution that would appoint Darcy Christopherson to Position 1, Sarah Schaefer, the new Director of Wenatchee Outdoors, to Position 3, Steph Grubich with Confluence Health to Position 4, and Steve Maher to Position 5. And it was recommended highly that you do that.
Are these all -- these are all returning members, or are some of these new members?
So, Darcy and Steve are returning. Sarah and Stephanie Grubich are new.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Allison? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make motion to adopt Resolution Number 2016-07, appointing members to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for terms ending December 31, 2017. Darcy, this is where I'm going to fluke, Darcy Christopherson?
Christopherson, yeah.
Christopherson. Sarah Schaefer, Stephen Mayer?
Maher.
And Stephanie Grubich. Sorry, the Latino in me comes out.
And I need a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt Resolution 2016-07, appointing Darcy Christopherson, Sarah Schaefer, Stephen Maher, and Steph Grubich to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you.
It was nice to have a representative of Confluence Health on board.
Yeah, that's great. Steph's great.
And I need a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Bailey to adopt Resolution 2016-07, appointing Darcy Christopherson, Sarah Schaefer, Stephen Maher, and Steph Grubich to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
It was nice to have a representative of Confluence Health on board.
That's great, Steph's great.
Yeah, really great.
Diversity Council.
The Diversity Council is going crazy. Next meeting, I'll have two more members. They have the ability to have 11 to 16 members and all of a sudden they're climbing up there. So these are returning members who wish to be appointed to new three-year terms. They actually were considered at the December meeting, but this staff person missed getting them reappointed. So you have before you Resolution 2016-09, which would reappoint Megan Allenies and Gabby Fernandez to new three-year terms on the Diversity Advisory Committee.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2016-09, appointing two members to the city's Diversity Advisory Committee for a three-year term, those members being Megan Allenies and Gabby Fernandez.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Poyer to adopt Resolution 2016-09, appointing Gabby Fernandez and Megan Allenies to the Diversity Council. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Allison. Steve King. Got a couple of items for you. A little road vacation and some work on our...
Cliff for floods.
Oh, sorry. I jumped through it. I'm sorry. Cliff Burdick. Ordinance 2016-02, flood ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Cliff Burdick, building official. I'm here tonight to request counsel to adopt ordinance number 2016-02, amending Wenatchee City Code Chapter 2.05 Flood Hazard Prevention. I hope you've all had a chance to read the reference material. You notice those are very minor changes that were recommended by Department of Ecology. And I just request that you adopt this ordinance. Any questions?
So do we always make changes that Ecology tells us to make?
Typically, probably do.
You have to in this case.
I'm okay knowing the big brother isn't telling me what to do, but...
Was there an ordinance? Oh, there is.
Yeah. Ordinance 2016-02.
Mayor, I make a motion to ordinance number 2016-02, amending prior ordinance number 2004-18, codified at Wenatchee City Code Chapter 2.05 relating to flood hazard prevention.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Harold to adopt ordinance 2016-02 related to our flood hazard preservation as presented in our packets this evening. Any questions or comments for Cliff? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cliff. Now, Mr. King. We've got three items this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Steve King, Community and Economic Development Director. The first item is a correction to a legal description from a vacation ordinance that was adopted in 2008. We had vacated in 2008 about 10 feet of the easterly 10 feet of Rightway on Worthing Street, where the Public Works, the former Public Works property is. And we messed up on the legal description. We did our mapping right, but the legal description was a little bit wrong. And so when the title report was run on this property, they had questions. And this is a correction ordinance to fix that legal description.
So all three of these next items have to do with the public works site where the hotel is proposed.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're just cleaning stuff up?
Cleaning stuff up for the title.
For the developer?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, we're okay. It seems like this goes back a long ways, but that, didn't we also do a small strip or something with the PUD along that other, on the eastern boundary as well?
Yeah, and that didn't come up as any, no issue there.
There, we're okay on that, okay.
So any other questions for Steve? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance number 216-03, amending prior ordinance number 2008-04, vacating a street and/or alley located in the city of Wenatchee and reserving a perpetual easement to the city of Wenatchee for utility purposes.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Bailey to adopt ordinance 2016-03 regarding the vacation of a portion of Worthing Street. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. Next item?
Next item is an amendment to the covenants that the council adopted for that property, restricting the use and establishing a timeline for performance. Upon negotiating the sale of this property, they asked to extend that timeline from two years to three years. And it kind of makes sense if you take a few months to get your permits and 15 to 18 months to build it, you're right up against the two-year timeline. So they didn't want to have that kind of pressure of a failed performance. And so we agreed, staff agrees with their request. And this is amendment to the covenants to give that extension to three years.
Would this, it's just for this one particular instance, right? Or is it for any other?
Just for this one piece of property.
It's just for this one piece of property?
Yeah, so we put basically covenants on the property a number of years ago because we really wanted specifically a hotel or a restaurant. And so we put some pretty restrictive covenants on the property. And then obviously, the current developer thinks they're slightly too restrictive in terms of the amount of time to build. We don't want someone to buy the property and not build and flip. And so we've got some pretty tough restrictions on there. So he's asking that we loosen this one up a little bit. And if it was my $15 million, I'd probably want three years as well, so.
Well, it makes sense because...
Build it right the first time. Well, Your Honor, I make a motion for City Council to authorize the mayor to sign and record the first amended declarations of covenants, conditions, and restrictions for 25 North Worthing Street.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Sparza and a second by Councilmember Markhart to authorize the mayor's signature on the first amended declaration of covenants and conditions for 25 North Worthing Street. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then a change in the purchase and sale agreement, Mr. King.
Yes. So again, the title report saw that there might be some confusion between the PUD easement or the park lease agreement. And so the legal description didn't change numerically or change anything on the ground, but they added references to the park legal description so that from an intent standpoint, there is no confusion that the property line is the same line as the park lease line. So that's what the legal description change is. We re-recorded a boundary line adjustment to make this official with the county records. And so this is just amending the real estate purchase and sale agreement to be consistent. The second item is the covenants, which we just talked about. And the third item is, is we found that one of the stormwater pipes that's tied to the First Street outfall that needs to stay in place lied outside the First Street Rightway that was vacated years ago. First Street Rightway used to go all the way to the river. And so that stormwater pipe goes all the way to the river. And we wanted to make sure we reserved the easement so in case we had to work on that pipe. It's just a little sliver right there where the entrance is, where the construction entrance that you saw down there is. And they didn't have a problem with that. So this is a legal description for that stormwater easement.
These little cleanups when you get ready to sell a piece of property.
Yes. And the construction's done. I will take this moment to say the construction's done down there. So we're ready to get our no further action letter.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council authorize the mayor to sign the third addendum to the purchase and sale agreement for the sale of 25 North Worthing Street.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Poyer to authorize the mayor's signature on the third addendum to the purchase and sale agreement for 25 North Worthing. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Bicycles, Gary?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Gary Owen, again.
It's really interesting looking at all the old legal stuff on this one and the old type, print, and...
Oh, yeah, so I'm here to...
History lesson.
I'm here to recommend that we undo something that was done by, well, it used to be city commission back in the 1940s. And if I could have asked somebody why they did this, you know, I would have done that. But I haven't been able to find anybody and I didn't really have the time to look too hard, to be honest, so. But for some reason, and this is still in our code, and we've known it, and like a lot of our code, we need to clean up things. My dad used to tell me when I was a kid, I used to love it. He'd say, "Doggone government anyway. Every time they make a new law, they should have to delete an old one." And there's some truth to that because we got a lot of old code that, you know, but it takes time to go back through it and make sure that you're not throwing anything away that's appropriate. In this case, it was an emergency for some reason back in the 40s to ban bicycles from parking on the Avenue, Columbia, Mission, First, Palouse, Rondo, and Yakima Streets in the downtown core. And that follows through in our code today. And a number of times, we've gone in and we've put bicycle parking racks down on the avenue, you know, to accommodate some of the uses. And our comprehensive plan, I mean, this really flies in the face of our comprehensive plan. All the departments agree. So it was pretty simple. The city attorney just went ahead and put together an ordinance that kills the old one and...
30 days in jail for parking your bike on Wenatchee Avenue.
Oh, my goodness. It must have been something very serious.
A hundred dollar fine back then was a lot of money.
Yeah. Probably better, you're...
Well, and the fine went up. This was amended and the fine went up from $100 bucks due to, I think, $500 sometime in the... I'd gone through this last year and looked.
They were serious about this.
So the Downtown Association supports us doing this. And, you know, if we're ever gonna be putting, you know, cherrals on the streets down there like some people want and, you know, establishing more formal bicycle routes on First Street and some of that thing, it's really, I think, a good idea to get this out of our way.
All right. Any questions for Gary? If not, entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2016-04, repealing ordinance number 1066, Section 1, codified at Chapter 8.08 WMC, relating to restrictions on parking bicycles.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Sparza to adopt ordinance 2016-04 relating to the restrictions of parking of bicycles. Questions or comments?
The only comment I would have is that, not knowing the history at all, but my sense tells me that this is probably a large number of kids going down after school and dumping their bikes on the street. And all the shop owners downtown come and glued the modern version of that as skateboards, so. It just kind of keeps going, but...
I thought of skateboarding, too.
Hoverboards would be next or something.
Yeah. Head it to the Spudnut Shop or the Midget or something. It's interesting that the date of this ordinance is, I don't know, a week or two before the end of World War II.
Yeah.
It's post-bombing in Japan.
Prohibition around then? Prohibition was before that, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it was.
This was just about the end of, World War II ended in September of '45, and this was at the end of August.
I would love to talk to someone that was involved in this when it happened, just to see what the thoughts were.
Things were different then, Ms. Reeves.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Is Carrie around? Did we lose her?
Here she comes.
She coming? Come on up, Carrie, you're first. So on the mayor's report, I was gonna have Carrie give you an update on process for hiring a public works director and process for hiring a police chief. We've had some comments and some emails from some of the council members. And so she's just giving you an update of kind of where we're at and kind of process. And I want to hear a little bit from you guys if you think we're kind of going in the wrong direction, so.
Good evening. Hi. So we actually received 27 applications for our public works director position. And thankfully, a lot of those applications were very positive. So we have some very strong applicants. Of those 27, we met with the mayor and Allison. We reviewed all of those applications and we've narrowed it down to a list of seven that we're gonna be inviting to interviews. And that could happen as early as next week to start scheduling those interviews. And I think right now, we're just finalizing the interview committee, who's gonna be on that. We do have a process that we're going to go through, a first initial screen that we're gonna go through before we bring the finalist candidates to the mayor. We want to make sure they run through a screen first. And then we're still determining how many steps are going to follow that, given the public interest and various interests that we've received with regard to this position. So we are in discussions with regard to that.
For the original, we have a, we're still putting together the team of first interviews.
That's correct.
Including you and Allison and I believe Dave Erickson and Deanne.
Right. We're still in the process of putting out the invitations for that.
And maybe a couple of outside, not city employee folks in the arena. You know, we've had overtures from some city employees that want to be involved in that process. And I've kind of thought that maybe city employees aren't best picking their boss. So I've kind of shied away from that.
Right.
Whether we get down to a final group of two or three and have some sort of public meeting where you can come in and have a cup of coffee and something like that. We're thinking about doing that where members of our staff can come and meet the final three or something. We're kind of leaning in that direction.
Correct. And certainly, we don't want to devalue the input of our employees. That's very important, but we want to do the right thing and make sure that we address it appropriately as far as the process is concerned, as well as some of the public members that have expressed interest in participation as well.
And then police chief, where are we at with that?
So the police chief, this is very exciting. We met last week, the mayor, Allison, myself, as well as Chief Robbins. And we discussed a timeline for the direction that we want to go with that. He has an unofficial estimation on when he would like to retire. And I don't know if that can be public. We'll just keep it at...
You can tell on the date. He was pretty honest.
All right, I just, you know, until we have it in writing. So we're looking at mid-June to July. And so right now, what we're doing is we're identifying our panel again. This is a very public interest, high public interest position. And so we have had some activity as well as people that are interested in being involved in the process. So again, we're certainly gonna take that into consideration and utilize that in planning the steps. But as of now, the timeline, identifying the panel fairly quickly, I'm actually preparing a timeline and ironing that out. And I'll present it to the mayor within a matter of days. And literally from there, our goal to launch the advertisement, initial launch, would be February 15th. So it's a fairly quick turnaround to get that started. And I think the earlier we start, the better chance we'll have to have a real thorough process and actually get ahold of some candidates that we're hoping to get ahold of.
Who would be on the panel?
That's, we're still discussing that. I think there's gonna be several layers. And I think the initial panel will be a screening panel. And certainly, the mayor's welcome to join in all panels. But I think that we're still in the real preliminary stages of addressing the panel members.
I think at some point, again, especially with that one, there'll be some sort of public outreach.
Absolutely.
If, you know, if the council thinks they want to have one member on the panel, that would be fine. We don't want to have a bunch of members. But on the police chief especially, you know, we may end up with a union rep from the police department as well. I mean, they were kind of looking at that slightly different. And again, I think some public outreach at some point when we get down to a list of, you know, a smaller list.
Right. And it's not to say we wouldn't consider internal applicants. We're just interested in reviewing that along with external interest as well, to make sure we have the right person for the position. And I think, lastly, the piece that I wanted to touch on with regard to the police department, I think that...
You have to speak into the microphone a little more so we can all hear you because this is getting recorded on live television, so.
Love it. Nobody told me that. So with regard to the police chief, I think that we're doing quite a bit of background work on that position. I'm working with Chief Robbins in identifying processes that have worked for other cities and making sure that we identify the best method that we go out to market, I guess, for lack of a better way to put it, for the position.
And that one, we may end up, there are a number of companies that can help do that. And we're still going back and forth as to whether we hire an outside company to help us with that or whether we do it internally. Carrie's been talking to some folks who can help and we'll make a decision. It won't be expensive, I don't think, if we... She's more than capable of doing most of the work. So we'll let you know if we decide to do something like that. But so both of those, I mean, the public works director, we're further along, obviously, than the police chief. But these are both gonna be somewhat public processes. So if you guys have any comments or concerns about what we're at least talked about, what we've, we've talked about, you know, please let me know or tell me right now so we can kind of change in midstream here, but it's kind of the thought process we had going.
Well, I, I've had a couple of contacts about, you know, interest in being on, involved in some, some capacity, and I, I don't, I guess I don't have any particular recommendations in terms of what that capacity is, other than I think it is really critically important that we have a, a good public engagement in this process. I'm not, I, I don't want to demean that position with, with this comment, but I don't think it's nearly as important...
For Public Works.
It's for Public Works to do that as it is for, for the police chief. The police chief is really, in a lot of ways, like yourself, is kind of the face of the community, and, and who that, who that person is, he or she, is critical, I think, to, to the well-being of this community, so, you know, I think it's really important that we have, have a lot of public input here.
So maybe what we'll do, Carrie, then, is if we get kind of that internal kind of timeframe and plan together for the police chief, why don't we just get it out to the council members for their comments, and you guys can get back to us and say, "Hey, need more public, less public?" When we come up with the process looks like, we'll make sure you guys all have copies of it and let us know if you think we're moving in the right direction.
Great. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie.
You bet.
And then, I think, from, from my mayor's report, really, I was, was in Olympia on Tuesday. I'm not very good at driving over to Olympia and back in the same day for two minutes of testimony in front of the Finance Committee. I don't know how you do it, or Councilmember Kula, it takes me two days to recover now. But, you know, we do have our DDA bill, which is a designated disaster area, which is basically tax increment financing, same as we did with our LRF on our waterfront. We've got a bill dropped in the House and the Senate, sponsored by our local representatives, to do something similar in North Wenatchee Avenue where the St. Melton Northwest Wholesale properties had burned. So we're monitoring that very closely. I'll be over on Tuesday again to testify on the Senate side, exact same bill, Senate Government Committee, I think, House had in their Finance Committee, and we'll just kind of see where that goes. It was nice the port was over and helped testify, as did some folks from Shalane and others, so we had more than just me testifying on the House side, so just kind of watching that, and hopefully we'll get some good news with that. It's a short session, so I don't know when bill drops are, but we're working pretty hard and in close contact with our legislators. I think that's all I got from the mayor's side. Council members?
Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, we made the appointments tonight, what we looked at. We've set a calendar for the year with requests for funding coming out here in a blink of an eye, which is gonna be August, and we're also, staff is helping, helping put together a, a public, an opportunity for public discourse on the, the last three years that we've had our primary contract for tourism promotion with the Wenatchee Valley Chamber of Commerce, to evaluate that, because it's up and we'll, we here will be needing to renew that presumably before year's end. So there'll be another opportunity. If, if you don't have enough meetings to go to, by golly, we'll make sure that there's some more for you.
So we'll expect a recommendation from the Lodging Tax Committee regarding either sticking with the chamber or doing something different sometime during the year?
Yeah, I think we want to finish it up November is our coincident with our budget calendar.
Okay, perfect. Anything else for the good of the order? We do not meet next week. When do we meet again?
February 11th.
11th or 12th will be our next meeting, regular session, so.
12th or the 11th.
11th.
It's 11th, and you've already told me you won't be here for that, right?
No, I won't.
And you're gonna be traveling when?
Later on.
Late in the month?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? We're adjourned.